All right, we're gonna get started with the agenda portion of the meeting. We have no reading, nothing on second, we have nothing on second reading. First reading. Uh, one, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing, Parking Section 10-16, that 020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, Reference to New Street. We have two, in order to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic Chapter 10-20, Traffic Control, Section 10-20, that 060, 10-20, that 070, Schedule 8B, Loading Zones in Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing, and Parking Section 10-16, 050, Schedule 29, Time Limit, uh, Reference to Park, uh, New Street, excuse me. Then we have resolutions. Number one, approve amendment. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales over the day. Four, pull it, pull it, pull it. Five, uh, emergency temporary appropriation. Six, authorize resolution in support of New Jersey Department of Transportation, Traffic Regulation, Order TRO, for, for the establishment of 25 miles per hour speed limit on the area of New Brunswick Middle School on Livingston Avenue. Seven, authorize submission of recycling tonnage grant, application for 2017. Eight, authorize certification of amount of paid recycling enhancement, act REA, uh, amount of $58,000, uh, $68.45, $3 per tonne paid on 19,356, 15 tonnes of solid waste. Nineteen, nine, approve renewal of liquor license with special ruling for Labano Incorporated, inactive liquor license number 1214, that's 330272006, 2016, 2017. Ten, request for street closing, requested by our Lady of Mount Carmel Roman Catholic Church, Moore Street, George Street, uh, George Street, Livingston Avenue, for Good Friday procession, date, Friday, March 30, 2018, 7:15 to 8:15, Police Extra Duty. Three, uh, approved request for a street closing, requested by CGR Racing, for Bugle Park Seminary Place in George Street, uh, College Avenue, for the annual Unite Act Marathon 8K Race, date, Sunday, April 15th, uh, 2018, from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Uh, date and time, April 14th to April 15th, uh, 8:00 a.m., Seminary Place Street Closing, uh, Sunday, April 15th to, uh, April 15th, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Date and time, uh, April 15th, uh, from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., College Avenue Closure, Police Extra Duty. Twelve, request, uh, for use of city park property, requested by the Amy Feman Bayhar Association for Cancer Prevention, uh, location, Bugle Park Jogging Path, and 10th Annual Walk for Diane to Benefit the Amy Foundation, uh, date, Sunday, October 20th, 2018, 6:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Thirteen, approved request for use of city property, requested by Roosevelt Elementary School, New Brunswick Board of Education, for the youth sports complex, Upper and Lower Field, Annual Roosevelt Elementary School Field Day, date, January, uh, date, Friday, June 1st, 2018, grand date, Monday, June 4th, 2018, time, 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Uh, fourteen, approved request for city property, requested by Oakley, for War Memorial, uh, War Monument Park for Christian Feeding Ministry, School Distribution and Spiritual Guidance, dates from February until December, and the following dates. Next one, fifteen, approved request for street closing, by New Brunswick Recreation, uh, New Brunswick Recreation, New Brunswick Tomorrow, uh, parks of the city streets will be closed to encourage residents to walk, run, skate, or ride bikes in the city streets, for cyclical B is Sundays, April 21st, 22nd, and 2018, and October 14th, 2018, time, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. Sixteen, approved request for the use of city property, requested by Supersonics Track Club, uh, Memorial Stadium Track and Field, for, uh, New, New Jersey AAU School District Championship, event for track and field, date, Sunday, April 8th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Friday, June 22nd, 2018, time, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Seventeen, approved amendment and resolution to extend, reason to extend the contract for one additional year commencing, February 19th, 2018, ending, uh, February 18th, 2019, Corporate Translation Service Incorporated, doing business as CTS, uh, Language Link, Interpreter, for the Department of Planning and Community Economic Development and Telephonic Interpreting, not to exceed $500. Eighteen, approved amendment and resolution, R-121, reason to extend the contract for one additional year commencing, July 1st, 2017, and ending, June 30th, 2018, with the Puerto Rican Action Board prayer for Fair Housing Counseling Service, not to exceed $15,000 non-pro tonne. Nineteen, authorized purchase of water utility, purchased by the water utility, under the state contract, A-88211T22103, Vehicles, Carbos, Class of 123, Regular Extended, from DFFFLM LLC TA, uh, Ditchman, Flemington Ford, for 1, 2018, for Transit, Transit, 150 Low Roof Cargo Van, not to exceed $23,169. Uh, twenty, approved release of performance guarantee to AME, uh, to AME Foster Wheeler, Environmental and Infrastructure, for road opening permits, 14, 1409, down to 14, 14063. Uh, twenty-one, approved appointment of counsel for Peter Jost Esquire, for Board of Estes Counsel, not to exceed $10,000. Twenty-two, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract, A-8889990M0483, National Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics, doing business as Wireless Communications Electronics, for two arbitrators with accessories, not to exceed $13,830.82. Twenty-three, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract, A-899-0483, National Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics Incorporated, doing business as Communications and Electronics, for two Panasonic CF33 tablets, not to exceed $9,474.60. Twenty-four, authorized, uh, purchase by Police Department under state contract, A-89980 to M-0483, National Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics Incorporated, doing business as Wireless Communications Electronics for Installation Services, not to exceed, uh, $9,385.74. Twenty-five, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract, A-833909T0109, Radio Communication Equipment and Accessories, from Motorola Solutions, for two digital mobile radios and accessories, not to exceed $7,907.0. Twenty-six, authorized tax collector, to transfer payments on several tax and utility accounts. Twenty-seven, approved authorization to advertise, furnish, and deliver, uh, repair class and accessories for water utility, specification number 66418W. Twenty-eight, approved amendment and resolution to extend the contract for one additional year, commencing March 1st, 2018, and ending, February 28th, 2019, with the Rogers Group LLC, for Police Department Accreditation Policy Maintenance and Compliance, not to exceed $5,005,000. Twenty-nine, approved amendment of resolution, R-0, uh, 0101719, reason additional amount of $100,000 for your water utility, with BMW Construction Incorporated, New Jersey, for equipment and labor, not to exceed $100,000. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Thirty, approved awarded contract with Near, Near Mac U.S. Incorporated, for proprietary software for the tax assessor, not to exceed $13,000. Thirty-one, approved purchase by Police Department under state contract, A-87720-M003, Data Communications Equipment, with G, uh, SHI International Corporation, for service agreement, term, 36 months, uh, term commencing December 30th, 2017, and ending December 29th, 2020, not to exceed $2,666.44 non-pro tonne. Thirty-two, approved amendment and resolution, R-121761, change order number four, with Suburban Consulting Engineers Incorporated, for construction inspection and engineering services for 2015 sanitary sewer improvement, project phase 1A, 1B, 1, 2A and 2B, specification number 89915RFP, amount $3,750.0. Thirty-three, approved amendment and resolution to extend the work following dates and times, uh, March 1st, 2018 to July 1st, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Extend work from March 1st, 2018 to July 1st, 2018, from 7:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Project by approval subject to receipt of additional authorization of the city engineer for each construction. Uh, so, request by Pulp Service Electric and Gas, PSENG, reason, PSENG Gas Modernization Program Phase 2. Thirty-four, authorized refund of property transfer service Incorporated, block number 207, lot number 022277, Comstock Street, 2018, taxes in amount of $330.18. Thirty-five, approved awarded contract with Absolute Fire Protection Company, for fire area ladder device repair services, 12-month period commencing February 8th, 2018, and ending February 7th, 2019, specification number 65517P, not to exceed $20,000. Thirty-six, approved awarded contract with Site Fleet Incorporated, for emergency, uh, vehicles and parts, repair services for the fire department, term 12-month period commencing February 8th, 2018, and ending February 7th, 2019, specification number 65417P, not to exceed $100,000. Thirty-seven, approved amendment and resolution, reason to pay the outstanding invoices, $1,842 for 2017 Police Department, with GE Capital Information Tech Solution, with DBA Rico USA, not to exceed $1,842.30. Approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Thirty-eight, approved off-premise rapper at 126 College Avenue, for Institute for Children with Cancer and Blood Disorders, doing business as Embrace Kids Foundation, Thursday, uh, March 1st, 2018. Now, thirty-nine, approved amendment and resolution, uh, R-051749, reason to pay the invoices from December 17th, 2008, 2017, in amount $27,000 to $27,186, with Horizon's Blue Cross Blue Shield of New Brunswick, New Jersey Incorporated, for dental benefits, not to exceed $27,186. Uh, forty, approved amendment and resolution, R-081569, reason for revised endurance and specifications due to the new construction code requirements, additional masonry repairs for USA Architects, for architectural services for masonry repairs and roof replacement[696.13]
A good attorney who is not influenced by politics here in Millsex County, and I think he's a good choice for the Ethics Board Attorney. Moving on to number forty-five, Mr. Athol is the Planning Board and Zoning Board Attorney, and I just want to understand, is he an employee of the city in addition to this professional service agreement?
He's employed, purposes of representing the planning and the zoning board, who receives the salary. This actually is a professional service agreement with his firm where it's contemplated that he'll provide the majority of the work in connection with this litigation, which is an action file called an action in the District of Ridge filed in connection with an application.
Okay, so there is pending litigation.
Yeah, that's what this resolution is for.
Okay, the resolution, I didn't see in the resolution what application or what the actual...
It says pending litigation, may not say the name of the lawsuit.
Could...
Need not, but I could tell you that, I can't tell you the name of the plaintiff. It escapes me at the moment, but it arises out of an actual little prerogative writ that was a matter that was heard before the planning board dealing with the recent approval for the hotel where the old Bennington's is located.
I see. Mr. Council President, do you think you could ask the planning director if he knows who the person who filed that action is?
Is he?
Yes.
I don't recall the name off the top of my head, Zennel L. C., but I believe they are a competitor, they own some motels or hotels in New Brunswick.
Understood, thanks for the clarification. And so, just on the topic of Mr. Athol, does anybody know his salary?
I think he makes in the neighborhood of forty, high forties, maybe fifty thousand dollars to represent both boards.
Understood, and does he get health benefits?
I'm not sure to answer that question.
How about pension?
No, I don't know.
Okay, and so this would be an additional ten thousand through the firm?
Up to ten thousand.
Yeah, up to ten thousand.
Hopefully, he'll never reach that amount.
Regarding this one matter, okay, I think he's, you know, obviously he's the board's attorney, so he's probably the best choice for that. I did want to ask about eight forty-six. This is Refund the Esco. It says that the work has been completed on this ninety-six, I think it's supposed to be Dance One Hundred Fire Street. I thought they were going to put in like a ten-story building there. What work has actually been completed at that site?
As far as I recall, there were two applications on that. They came in for one application, didn't go forward with that, then came back to the board with a second application for revised project. This is releasing the Esco for the first project, which is no longer a valid project.
Okay, so what is the plan for that site?
They're proposing adding a number of floors to the existing building to provide some residential units there. I don't think they've filed all their force approval reviews and so forth for that yet, but again, this one deals with the very first one. But it's a residential project.
Okay, so I think I know the second one, but maybe not the first one. That's all I have on the resolutions, thank you.
Anybody else in the public on the resolutions?
Hi, I'm Ms. Danielle Moore, I have a couple of questions about Island Number Six. I believe at the traffic meeting, they said that, if I understand correctly, that for Livingston Avenue and front middle school, that it will be approved for the signs to go up? And if I understood that the city will be taking care of that job and not the county?
Please, the council, that section of Livingston Avenue is NJDOT jurisdiction, so the county has actually nothing to do with it. Specific to the resolution support, the NJDOT still has to issue a traffic regulation order, that TRO. They require both New Brunswick's and North Brunswick's resolution support. Specific to answer Ms. Moore's question is, at that point, the state will dictate what we can or can't do as relates to signs, but yes, it is our intention that the city will take that on so that we don't wait for other entities to get their act together.
Okay, thank you, then another question I have due to where I noticed that it says twenty-five miles per hour. Is that because that's in a thirty-five mile zone, because I know the rest of the schools do too, where they say fifteen miles per hour?
Yes, the other areas in town are fifteen, are New Brunswick's jurisdiction, so we can decide anything that we want. Specifically Livingston Avenue, that was what the state's recommendation was after they did, conducted their investigation at our request.
Well, okay, I would like to thank the city, the Board of Education, and all for your help for getting this together, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? Are you done?
Who's resolution? Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmembers Carter, Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes, standing at twenty-one.
All right, now we have nothing else, and then we'll go to public, we have anything from the council? All right, so now we'll go to public discussion. Please step forward to the microphones, please remember that you have five minutes, please state the name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Trump.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charlie Hightower, first time ever been here, but I have a very serious complaint. I live at twenty-eight Henry Avenue in New Brunswick, on the corner of Roosevelt. Now, my complaint is, my first time ever been here, I don't know what it's all about, but I was told to come here. I have talked with the lieutenant who is in control of the traffic zone. I mean, I don't get along twenty-some odd years ago, I'm not going to call no names. I talked with him about this situation, nothing has been done. School wants to come through about that stop sign, I think they see that stop sign, they speed up and go faster. Now, cars come through here at least around thirty miles an hour, and in the afternoon and morning time. I'm asking you all, maybe I'm wrong or not, I don't know, but you haven't been involved in something like this yet. Can anything be did about this situation? Sometimes, on nights one day, kids be riding on the back of the car, on the front of the car, on the top of the car. It's fun to them, so I don't get hurt. Up the street there, where I live at, on Roosevelt, you know, Henry Avenue. Kid got hit last year, he was out of school for four months, and he had to stay home, he couldn't go to work, out of school. His mother worked at Rutgers, she had to stay home and take care of him. Now, I'm asking, can anything be did about this here? I don't know.
I'll discuss it with the Traffic Division, where if Charlie Hightower's complaints, it will work on it.
And I have asked the lieutenant, I'm not going to call his name, like I said, we didn't have a beef down through the years. I'm well, well-known in New Brunswick. I did a lot of things in New Brunswick, although I'm not going to say what I did, they did a lot of things with me. And I said, my name is Charlie Hightower, and if you're trying to ask me, you the po-po, no, I'm trying to protect my neighborhood. And also, excuse me, the head chief of the Board of Education in New Brunswick, he came, him and his one, his coworker, came to my house, going over a year ago, they sit out there, and they see all these other things going on. All right, now, the Board of Education, they both have stopped, commercial, ABC, and a couple of other above companies. It's dangerous. My wife was pulled out there, a little bit of a year ago, she almost got hit. God forbid, I hope none of the hell. I'm trying to be a peaceful guy, and I need some help, and so if I can get you all to help me, I would really appreciate it very much. Thank you, and excuse me, no hard idea if I say his name wrong. My first time ever been here. Thank you very much.
Good evening, once again, members of the council, Charles Cradaville. Want to begin by thanking the New Brunswick Traffic Commission for giving me the opportunity to present some constructive suggestions for how to improve transit in the city. And I thought they were some, you know, great questions, and they were very generous with their time, so I want to start by thanking them. I also understand that Cable Television Advisory Committee met last night for the first time in a long time. Can you please, Mr. Council President, ask Ms. Bradshaw if she can give a summary of what went down there?
Your name is Bradshaw?
I am, yeah, let me stand in front of the camera. We met last night, we had four members in attendance, it's a seven-member board. We did a reorganization of members, elected a chair and a secretary, and then we talked about some of the things that we want to work on for 2018. We're going to meet again in April, the date hasn't been set yet. The meeting was announced downstairs on the board, the date will be announced on the board again when we have it. We were there for about forty minutes.
Okay, and what are those things that the board's going to work on this year?
I don't know yet. We talked about a couple of things, we talked about updating the ordinance to change with the technology. Things are a little different than they were when the ordinance was written, outlining what the Cable Advisory Commission does. We talked about some of the projects we can work on in the city, we talked about the channel, talked about a few things. But we don't have set goals yet, it was just kind of informal discussion.
Okay. Well, I hope these meetings will find their way onto cable television sooner rather than later. Can you please ask Captain Miller, why was Lieutenant Oles demoted?
Captain Miller, the personnel issue?
Yes. So you didn't ask the question that I asked you to ask?
I anticipated that we, I'm sure you already knew that that was a personnel issue. Okay, Captain Miller, why was Lieutenant demoted?
That was a personnel issue, we're not going to discuss that, just kidding.
Thank you.
So you won't discuss why Lieutenant was demoted to Sergeant, it's just for us to not, not, we don't have a right to know, in your view?
It's a personnel issue.
It's a demotion of a police lieutenant. I think the public has a right to know, should know, but if you want to keep it a secret, you can. I'll keep looking into it.
By law, you can't discuss personnel matters in the public, and I think the Council President is aware of that. Mr. Cradaville, I know you're aware of that.
Well, I also know that the city has posted things on the website about matters involving the water director's salary being cut as punishment for actions. Was that, did you violate the law when you posted that to the city website?
If it was posted, and I don't recall the exact event that you referred to, but I'm sure if it was posted, then it was properly vetted and that it was within the confines of the law at that time. But your question, I think, goes a little further as to Sergeant Oles, maybe this is a personnel matter, so.
Just to be clear, it's not the current water record, the prior water record, it said in that statement that it was a racial slur that he used on the job that was the reason for his pay cut. And so, I'm just asking for the reason. I think it's fair to ask for the reason, but let the record reflect, the council, the law department, and the police department want to keep it a secret why Lieutenant Oles was demoted.
It's the law requires, we're not looking into it.
Well, I think you should want to know, I think you should ask it, but I'll move on. The city was fined as a result of the scam that Mr. O'Rourke was running, where the public wasn't told about the problems with the water. Part of that was a significant fine that was levied against the city. Can you tell me whether that fine was ever paid?
That's not been paid yet.
And what is the plan to, is it going to ever be paid? What's the status, I know there was some negotiating going on.
Yeah, Mr. Shandy is still in negotiation with the Attorney General's Office relative to that.
Okay. I'd like each of the council members to articulate your position on the legalization of marijuana. It's a big issue right now in New Jersey. Are you in favor or against?
Does anybody want to articulate their?
I think that Mr. Cradaville and I have spoke briefly once about it, and I'm conflicted, I'm wrong with you. So I am not that well informed, I have to make it, investigate and learn a little bit more, but I'm conflicted at this time with that. I see decriminalization, that we have to do something about it, but also the recreational part of it is the one that I'm not sure. And medicine, yeah, that, so I have to learn a little bit more. So I'm not prepared to say yes, I'm for or I'm against it, I'm just still trying to understand it myself.
I made conjunction with Senator Rice and the New Brunswick, I mean, the New Jersey black elected officials, which we need to have hearings and decide how are they going to regulate it, where it's going to be placed at, because we know historically when we did things like this, there's been overabundance in certain cities. You know, people are yelling revenue, we're having revenue right now, but we don't have a way to protect kids, we don't have a zoning, where to put it, and we don't know, there's too many ifs, there's too many ifs right now. So we can't take one side or the other, and there's a split, two people, people are trying to conjoin decriminalization with legal sales. And that's a false art, that's a false equivalence, you know, there's a split in between that. And I know a lot of people, right now, in another meeting I was in the other night, they said they're going to have hearings and then see what it is, and then we can make an educated judgment.
Do the same way you did.
And I too, I'm looking for more information, I'm pretty set on medicinal use, not so much recreational use for reasons that my fellow colleagues have stated. And, but there is a seven-hour later this month that's being given by the state, and I do plan on attending that and getting more information where I can to make a informative decision.
I'd be there too.
Hope to see you there. So thank you very much for answering my question. I want to thank Councilwoman Escobar for attending the most recent meeting of the New Brunswick Housing Authority, and I want the record to reflect that the Housing Authority Board took a new position with regard to questions from me in that they won't answer them at the meetings, and they basically, you know, stayed silent or refused to answer, and told me to put them in writing, and I copied the councilwoman on my written questions to the executive director, and unless you got some response, I didn't, I want the record to reflect it, all of my questions remain unanswered. So as promised, I'm bringing them to this board. The Big Chill Five K is a great event, and I was very, been proud to be a participant in it many of the years of my time here in New Brunswick. It's an interesting term, Five K, it's named the Five K because it's five kilometers, but last year it could be named the Five K because the New Brunswick Housing Authority paid five thousand dollars to support that event, which kind of runs contradictory to the whole point that they are the beneficiary of the event. It's supposed to be something where the New Brunswick Housing Authority is the charity recipient of toys that are donated at the event, but instead, I've learned from the authority and from Rutgers that they actually paid five thousand dollars to the event. And I want to ask if there's any idea of how many toys they got for those five thousand dollars?
I know they do material for the kids, and I usually attend, we send out the visitors. I know there's thousands of toys that they get, but I'm not sure how many in terms of numbers. And just for the record, I did follow up with John Clark, the secret director, in terms of your email, because you know, that's one of the many, you know, questions I did prepare. I am not ready to answer, because I believe he said that he's still sick with the flu, you know, that he was sick at the last meeting, so he has not had a chance to address your questions, but he said he may even, that he was going to try to do it by next week.
Okay, well, I hope to get those answers, I've been waiting since December eighteenth for the results of an open request that would reveal how much the authority has spent on lawyers. I'm very concerned about them going over their budget for legal fees. Manfredi and Polecchio, the Willance Firm, and potentially others, we don't know, because they have not yet responded to that request that is now going on a couple of months old. Also, you've been at the meetings, you've seen them promise to have a board retreat. Can you tell me, have they had that retreat yet or even scheduled?
I'm not prepared to answer any of those questions, for some of those questions, they, the questions I have, the answers I don't have. So I am not prepared to answer any of the questions.
Okay, they've promised HUD that they'll have quarterly meetings of their operations committee. Can you tell me whether they're keeping that promise?
That there's some, I don't know, yes, the operations, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Otero has missed three meetings in a row now. Can you tell me if she's passed the required classes for commissioners? Has she even signed up for the classes? Okay, the last, recently at the council meeting, I asked for the SEMAP score of the authority. Does anybody know the SEMAP score? Whether or not they're meeting their obligation to HUD? I just have a couple more.
Thank you. Really, really, Mr. Cradaville, we have a lot of people waiting.
Okay, will you give me a chance at the end of the meeting?
You guys, a lot of people waiting.
Okay, last question, will you give me a chance at the end of the meeting to finish my questions? No? Okay, I'll see you after the meeting.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Junior Amaro of Clinton Water Watch, New Jersey Environmental Group, work here on One Hundred Bear Street. Interesting to know about the, they want to build a residential complex on there, let me know about that. So I came back, came by a few months ago, and I wanted to thank again Council President Fleming and Councilmember Escobar. Y'all signed what's called the Off-Fossil Fuels Fledge. Basically, it's a commitment of council members, elected officials from all ranks, from school board to state senate to congress even, of those that support getting, basically, the United States, their jurisdiction, New Jersey, off of fossil fuels and onto a hundred percent renewable energy, acknowledging that climate change is human caused, and as an elected official, you'll do everything in your power to stop fossil fuel infrastructure projects. What y'all have there is a resolution that Atlantic City passed. Atlantic City, very prominent city here in New Jersey, basically outlining even further, we think, their support of getting us off fossil fuels. Another other towns that have passed resolutions is this, Borden Town, they're facing a crisis with a gas compressor engine that's being built there in the next coming months. Of course, here around the area, we have a compressor station being proposed in the Franklin-Tontra area, which we presume will affect air quality around Central Jersey area, and we're fighting that actively. We actually have some state legislation that mirrors the pledge and resolution that y'all have there, sponsored by Senator Diebman in the senate, S. fourteen oh five, and somebody maintained use of this in the assembly. And that's a, eighteen twenty-three. Basically, we're trying to start a movement, we're trying to revamp our energy, how we think of energy here in New Jersey, change our renewable portfolio standards. The governor has signaled that it's something that he wants to do, and we're giving local elected officials and obviously state elected officials an opportunity to show their commitment to getting us off fossil fuels. So I really am here to urge other elected officials and council bodies to adopt resolutions as Atlantic City and Borden Town have passed, and join sixty other elected officials in New Jersey that include the two council member and council president that we have here, and sixty others around New Jersey, including Senator Loretta Weinberg, the majority leader, in getting us off fossil fuels and onto a hundred percent renewable energy. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Paul Zessler, I'm here with Jay Day tonight, we're both students of Rup University. We are actually members of the student governing body there, and he used to be part of Legislative Affairs, currently part of it. Basically, we're a committee within that, within that body of RUP students, specifically responsible with representing the students on a local, state, and federal government level. Recently, I've had a bunch of students come up to me, so there's kind of a couple of things I'm going to talk about, and a couple of questions I have about, namely, the jurisdiction of, because I know that Rutgers has its own police department, right, it has, I believe, a hundred and fourteen police officers, but there's a significant portion of RUP students that live off campus. And I'm wondering how that jurisdiction, if you will, overlaps or where that is cut off. I recently had a run-in where my girlfriend and I were trailed for a block or so right off campus, were eventually threatened with physical violence, and someone said that they would, quote, "shoot me dead." I've had other students also express concerns alongside Kent Cop's most recent police report, declaring that there has been kind of an increase in crime around and on campus. So I was really just wondering if there's kind of been an effort to increase police presence. I understand that, you know, that's not necessarily easily done, but I've had numerous students come up to me and say that they feel unsafe in various parts on and off campus, mainly off campus. And I'm wondering how the jurisdiction, how the jurisdiction between RUPD and New Brunswick PD works.
Captain Miller?
Sorry, jurisdiction, if Rutgers owns the property, then it's their jurisdiction. If they don't own the property and it falls within the city of the New Brunswick, then it's the Brooklyn Police's jurisdiction. However, we have platforms where we have trolls that work together with Rutgers. We're aware of the off-campus housing, obviously, and we work with Rutgers in controlling those areas, put actual officers there.
So I know that, you know, crime in terms of prevention isn't, that's not unilaterally on the police department, right, that shares public education and socioeconomic implications as well. But that being said, you know, students have voiced their concern to me, especially recently, but not feeling safe. So this is kind of a two-parter, that's off-campus students as well as commuter students. Commuter students is specifically in regard to the train station, right? Rutgers has about ten thousand commuter students. I don't have the exact number of how many people, how many of those students use the train, but the main complaint that I'm getting are from commuter students that do use the train, especially the ones that have classes that go late at night. I believe the train station closes at nine, nine-thirty? Yeah, so, especially when you're, there's also students that have internships, right, that study, and they come back late at night, right? And part of the issue is that if they're coming back on the side that's not close to campus, that when the train station is closed, it becomes very difficult to move around. And a lot of students, if I speak exact, then the past week or so, I've kind of been asking around, have shared their concern with me, that they feel unsafe, when basically, it's basically like, when you're, usually when you try to get back to the campus, you just go up to the train station, down through the, that little underlying passage and up the train station. So I was wondering if it's kind of NJ Transit's possibility to work alongside the police department, if that's RUPD or, because that's right by the Rutgers bookstore, so I'm just trying to figure that out as well.
The New Jersey Transit and Amtrak own the train station, so they set the hours, whether it opens or closes. The New Brunswick Police Department has officers, two officers assigned there, not quite seven, when the train station is open, there are officers, two officers assigned to the train station there. Now, late at night, when they do shut down, and some of the later trains are coming in, the trains, last train comes in around a few minutes after one o'clock, there's an officer assigned there specifically, but it is under thing, and occasionally, New Jersey Transit officer, Amtrak officer is there as well, but during the operating hour, New Brunswick Police has two officers there.
Okay. I guess I should just ask candidly, is there a possibility of, I guess, having just an officer stationed there until that last train on, at one AM? Or even last classes at Rutgers, I think, and at ten, I believe, so even like ten-thirty, I think would give a lot of students more time in terms of feeling safe and believing in campus.
I'll express your concerns to the operation commander, if you want to give me your name and number, I'll reach out for you when, you know, I can't give you a comment tonight.
Okay, thanks so much.
Captain Miller, is there anybody in particular that, when the students have a concern on the New Brunswick side, that is no Rutgers in terms of car intervention or anything in safety?
Well, I can also say with the technical area, I have another fine prevention, and, you know, safety within a community. I'm going to set up a meeting.
Because when I talk to you, the students.
Sure, just give me your number.
Okay, hold it. And then I should have one more general question, just for, you know, I know how, you were talking about, or sorry, in your answer, you mentioned kind of Rutgers property, right? That ends at that overpass, right? Where does it begin, like here in the, at East New Brunswick? That, where the train, where the, like, where the train draws over?
You said where does Rutgers?
Where does that, you know?
Rutgers property, where?
There's no Rutgers property on the side where the train station is. Rutgers property doesn't start until essentially the old Queens campus, or is that the Ben Nest on the corner?
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Where the bookstore is, that's the least.
Yeah, okay, and then just one more question, I guess, I suppose. So I understand that Rutgers is a state institution, right, and there's, the reason it's weird to me, right, is because we're in New Brunswick, right? But we seem to be somewhat secluded from the city as well, right? I guess that goes naturally with just being a university, right, you would kind of have a center of, I mean, universities have become businesses, right? So it's just a center of a lot of money, right, and a lot of emphasis is put on infrastructure, which I think naturally secludes it from New Brunswick. That being said, how do those two entities, New Brunswick and Rutgers, work together? Is there typically a lot of communication there, or is that kind of just between the state and New Brunswick, or how does that work?
I mean, as far as...
Yeah, like, because I mean, I understand that we don't, like, Rutgers doesn't, not we, but Rutgers doesn't have... doesn't, not we, but Rutgers doesn't have, like, a fire department, right? So there's a fire department that's situated very close to College Avenue, um, off of New Brunswick. Exactly. Yeah, so, is, I'm sure, is there just a bunch of provisions, uh, that are put there, like, in, in what way does Rutgers fit into New Brunswick?
Yes.
Um, Rutgers is part of New Brunswick, very much so, there's a lot of intermingling, pretty much all of our departments talk to Rutgers in one way or another. If you want to set up a meeting with the mayor's office, we can go over all this stuff with you, if you're in these kinds of.
Yeah, so that'd be great, thanks so much. That's all from me, thank you.
Hi, Danielle Moore. First, I would like to, uh, thank the city, once again, who will be doing Lee, Lee Avenue, with Delavan, Comstock, Handy and Remsen, Remsen and Ward, I did get the update from the, at the traffic meeting, that, uh, the poles will be putting in for the lights and everything, I thank you for that, hope to see it done soon. Also, once again, I will thank you for Lee and Ward for redoing the corner there, but I will, would, would like to ask, I spoke at the traffic meeting about it, due to where I was told to ask Captain Miller about putting in permanent speed meters, due to where I see that the roads will be done no time soon, due to where they all still have metal, metal pallets all on Lee Avenue between the area, so I was told to speak up and ask, ask you about, uh, putting permanent meters in as the cars go by on each side, and just, uh, show what speed limit they're doing, is that possible for you to do soon?
Well, we'd have to work with engineering, get the proper permits to put that in, as well as funding to purchase the meter, oh, speak to that. Exactly. Is that we don't have any meters available right now to put in, we'd have to purchase them and get funding for it.
Well, okay, I, I hope, hopefully you can, uh, at least try to get the drivers to know, come on, that's 25 miles per hour, you know, there's a record of nine accidents in that area in a certain amount of time, that shows you that's very dangerous, and from the impact, you can tell that they were from, not saying the cost, but you can tell that speeding was involved in it, doing, to where cars being flipped over, if I would like, you, you would like me to refresh your memory, I can bring the pictures back in, to where I gave the city of every, every accident. Well, okay, th, th, thank you, I hope it can be done, due to where it will be delayed with the speed bumps being, being put down, due to where the road work is still being done. Also, I would like to thank the city, the volunteers at Elijah Promise, uh, Mr. Jones, I know you participated in that, and the police officers, by keeping the homeless warm, January, that was record-breaking temperatures, oh, I, I was just worried, I know plenty of people were worried about, like, wow, they can't go to the train station anymore and sleep, due to where how they kept Elijah Promise open, set, uh, seven AM to about, I think it was six, six o'clock, and then, uh, building by the library from 6:30 until the morning, where actually, I, it was, wow, I'm just like, thank you, even for the police officers, where we got the word that, wow, how the police officers were going around picking up some of them, buying the pizza, making sure that they had blankets, keeping them warm, thank everyone, volunteer for that, keep up the good work, thank you. And now, getting back to a situation with Livingston Avenue, I was at the traffic authority meeting, uh, also for this one too, and then something just hap, happened, but I, I was told that, okay, that Livingston Avenue was approved to rearrange the road, and also brighten the lights up for Livingston Avenue from Stanford Street, Livingston Avenue going up to Middle School, how dark it is. That was Monday evening, a woman on the corner of Stanford and Livingston, where she got hit by a car, the man was not speeding, he was not at fault, the woman was not at fault. Wow, wow, it's so dark that you couldn't even see the woman coming across the street. Now, like I said, I know it's been approved, but I don't think, wow, wow, it has to take up to a year to, come on, just to ask the, the county for you to put in the word, come on, just replace the bulbs, make them brighter. Come on, the idea of, of, of speaking up on this, this, come on, to stop people from getting hurt, it's not like I don't go around investigating every corner, I give you proof of what's going on, due to where I'm a witness of something, being close call, I'm a witness for an accident, someone's giving me a message of something that keeps happening, I show you the evidence, so please, I hope, like I said, it's, that's different from reconstructing the road, that can take up the time, instead of what, what, 10 minutes just to replace the light bulbs on Livingston Avenue, please. Hopefully, the woman is okay, that was, like I said, Monday evening, that was not to mention any name, even one of your New Brunswick crossing guard, where she was the witness of the one, woman getting hit, and plenty of other witnesses getting hit there, and like I said, driver wasn't at fault, the woman was at fault, it's too dark there, so please, I hope you can put in the word, due to where it's been a record of how, what's been going on over there, because it's too dark. So please, like I said, I hope you can. And then also with Livingston Ave, Liv, Livingston Avenue, wow, wow, due to where it's beginning to be so dangerous, far speed, that was about two months ago, I spoke to you about, wow, cars speeding knocking down the fire hydrant on the corner of Livingston, uh, Wellington, with no one, no one, no, knowing that it was even done, it seemed like when I mentioned it, and now, the, the word is what, a crossing guard that got hit a couple of months on Livingston Avenue? Uh, did the city get the record of that?
Not sure. Well, um...
That, that was in front of Roosevelt, in front of Roosevelt School. Seems like, like I said, a lot of this stuff is not getting back to, to, to you. At least, come on, at least it's time to raise the wages for, for a crossing guard, maybe up to $15 now, because you're becoming very short, due to where who's gonna risk their life to come out there, what, $12.50, someone gets hurt, and then you don't want to pay them on the job, or they're out of work, you still don't want to pay them?
That's gonna be, that's a longer conversation for a little time, as far as finding, what they get paid.
Well, well, okay, please, please look into it, due to where you do still need plenty more crossing guards, so maybe that will bring some younger ones out there, because mainly you just have, what, people who are disability, and who, who are social security. So please, I hope you do look into that, thank you.
Anybody else?
What is it? I'm in the reverse line on 150 Boog Street. Um, I just, uh, late to ask, um, something, who's there, uh, requests a sidewalk for cleanup? Um, I want to just make sure that we have the proper, um, traffic.
We have it, it's gonna be in the, uh, packet for the next council meeting.
Yes, I just want to make sure that I have the proper, uh, request.
I believe it looks fine, we're passing it around to every department to comment on, like we always do.
Okay.
But I'm sure it'll be, uh, on the next meeting agenda.
About the, uh, law, um, ordinance, uh, can we go up to Nine Flag, uh, here, on the ordinance?
Then you would like a waiver of choice ordinance?
Yeah, this is for the future events that we will hold in, uh, cleanup.
You have to ask that in your application, and this board would decide whether they want to grant that.
Great, all right, thank you, so we'll see you next time.
Okay.